Call to order, the committee of the whole?
Yeah.
We're, um, we're, uh, a couple council members are missing in action at this point. I'm not sure if they're gonna be here tonight or not, but, um, council liaison suggests we go ahead and get started. So they may, they may join us in progress, or maybe something's come up. But we have very special presentation tonight, um, three, three guests with us tonight. We've got one item on the agenda, King County Equity and Social Justice Program. And I'd like to turn it over to my colleague Greg Taylor to make an introduction and kick things off.
Well, thank you, Council President. I'm gonna be short because I am eager to get right into the presentation, but I want to say that over the past few years, I've had the privilege of learning about the work that King County's Equity and Social Justice Ordinance has been doing throughout the county. And I want to thank you, Council President, for entertaining my invitation to invite the county here to do a presentation on cultural competency. Dr. Oloro is the Division Director for Environmental Health Services, and she does so many other things. I'm gonna keep it real short if I can, but I would be understating her if I didn't say that she is one of the architects of the Equity and Social Justice Ordinance, along with her team, Matthias Valenzuela and Tina Abbott. And I'm just thrilled that they're here, and I think we're gonna be able to learn something from them. And I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Taylor. With that, Doctor, you wanna go ahead and tell us about your program?
Well, thank you very much for both nice introduction and nice welcome. We are very happy to be here. I was sharing earlier that the work that we're doing, King County's Equity and Social Justice work, we're part of a national movement, if you will, that has 16 teams from across the country doing work under the umbrella of place matters. Essentially, where you live, work, play, and learn matter, and it contributes significantly to your health. So we're doing this work across, at a national level, and every time we go to the national meetings, people hold King County up as the model. And I'm very clear to say, we have not arrived, we have not solved all of these problems that are related to inequity and injustice. But we are, we have begun the journey, and we are committed to seeing it through. So the, the project that we're gonna talk about today really is one of those steps along the way that we're taking to see how we can make a difference. And so I'm gonna start with my, my colleague Matthias, start with the presentation of the work that we're doing, the general overview of what we're doing at the county, and then we'll launch into the hiring project.
Hopefully you can hear me okay?
Uh-huh.
Yep, okay, great. And thank you, um, council members for having us as, as visitors and guests today. We really appreciate this opportunity and are very happy to be here. So, um, just the, the story of, of equity and, and King County, why we're actually even doing this work, and Gazi said, I'm gonna begin just a general overview here. And it's important to see, if we look at life expectancy by county naturally, this, we're, we're actually doing quite well. This is a map of all counties in the United States, and the darkest greens are the, the places where we have the longest life expectancy, then going into light green, then into yellow, and then red. And the counties that are red are those that have the shortest life expectancy. And in fact, we do quite well here in, in King County. And if we look at it by, at this very 900-foot level, you know, very, very high up, we see that we're actually doing well, and maybe we don't really have an issue here. And we also think about the, the great, you know, industry and businesses, whether it's Boeing, and Microsoft, and Costco, you know, there's also this vision that we're very healthy, and we live very well here in the Pacific Northwest. But if we begin to look more, and, and look at the aggregate and break it down into really areas of the county, and this looks at census tracts with some of the, the cities also pointed out here, we begin to see a different story. And you see that the areas that are blue and, and darkest there have 92 years or higher in life expectancy. That's actually among the highest in the world, so we actually are even higher than the, the healthiest countries in the world, or the Scandinavian life expectancy. We have a people in our county that are the healthiest people in the world, really. But then you look down and you, the, the, you go green, and then yellow, and orange, and finally red, and you see that, in the red, you have people living 77 years and less as a life expectancy. So it's pretty significant. We have sometimes just a bike ride away, you have about 15 years difference in, in terms of life expectancy. And this, for us, is a huge concern, and this is really why we're doing the work. We can overlay, yeah, next slide. We also, if we overlay this too, and you actually can look at more closely at Renton, and what some of those differences, and how this plays out here locally, but it's a countywide phenomenon, really. Those same demographics and the life expectancy and the outcomes also, they coincide with where the people of color tend to be, and also where the low-income communities tend to be. And those same communities, this has basically looks at the lowest to the, which is blue, to the highest, which is red. So you can see, in terms of people of color, for example, South Seattle and South King County has the highest concentrations. Similar with low income, you have South Seattle and South King County having the, the brunt of the low income populations, and also parts of, of very North King County. And then low educational attainment, which is also a really important outcome, as we all know, that South Seattle and South King County is really where we have the highest number of students that are not graduating on time. That's what this is showing us.
This is one of my favorite slides, and so I said, I'll talk about this. So the, the idea, when we were thinking about how to plan this work is, you know, what, how could we show this visually so people could just look at it and get what we're talking about? A lot of the issues that we deal with as a government, you know, are services and programs that we provide for people. And usually, it's when things have happened already. When somebody is homeless, then we have services that go to homeless people, or people already are sick, and we have, we have programs that treat this disease, or, you know, something. And the idea is, at that time, it's really very expensive to give those services, and people are losing their lives. So what is it that we can do so we don't have most of the people and most of our resources concentrated downstream, as this, this depiction of a stream? So usually, when a stream, wherever it originates, is very, very narrow, and it's very forceful at that point. And so whatever you do, we figure, whatever we do upstream is going to prevent a lot of things from happening downstream. And so you'll have healthier people, you have happier people, you have people who are more accomplished and feel confident about themselves, they're more productive than if they were sick and trying to figure out how to get services, and it costs more coverage, and all of those issues. If we could prevent them, or keep it at such a level that is not as big, then both society and individuals would, would benefit. And so that's what this, this, this visual is about, is the idea of going upstream to put policies in place that will prevent people from having to be at this level where we're dealing with individuals when problems have already happened. And this is what undergirds the, the philosophy behind the work that we're trying to do.
So what we have created, the county, is a framework for this work, and really, two words we like to use is integrated and intentional. It's not gonna happen naturally. So what we have done is, one is, in King County, in 2010, we passed a countywide strategic plan. And as part of that strategic plan, there was a very deliberate inclusion of a new principle there by our executive, and it's the fair and just principle. And then in October of 2010, our county council unanimously passed an Equity and Social Justice Ordinance, which takes that fair and just principle and actually operationalizes and says, this is what this is gonna look like. It does definitions, it defines what equity means. For example, what we have, the way we have defined it is that all people have full and equal access to opportunities that enable them to attain their full potential. As part of this too, we, we, of course, define social justice, define inequities, and really, as part of inequities, we look at the things such as the maps that we were looking at before, and say, actually, those aren't natural situations. Those have been created by human actions, by societal decisions and things that have happened through our history that have created those situations. And just as we created those situations, we can change that situation. And as county government, it's central to our mission to actually be focusing on addressing those inequities. We also, as, as we passed this ordinance, it then became Equity and Social Justice, in a way, became law for King County. And we had the creation, which was very important, of, before we just had it, it was an executive branch, we had the creation of an inter-agency team that, that involved all county agencies and departments for the first time. And as you know, we, we, we put a significant amounts of our resources into such things as criminal justice, and the sheriff's office, and the jails, and the prosecuting attorney's office, and the courts. So it was very key to make sure that we're including it in, in all those agencies as well. And what we do now is report annually on our work, and what we've accomplished, and I think you have a copy of our, last year's report on Equity and Social Justice, which talks further around their determinants of equity, it has maps, and then talks about the examples of the work that we're doing. The example that Tina Abbott's gonna have to be talking about is one of the, one of the human resource projects that we highlight in the report as well. And right now, we're working on a new report that's gonna come out this summer. As part of this work too, we, and in the ordinance, we define the 14 determinants of equity, which we call those 14 social, economic, physical conditions that we want everybody to have access to, such things as healthy, built, and natural environments, family wage jobs, and job training. We want access to affordable, healthy, local foods, for example. We added one there that you might see as one of the roots, which is Equity and County Practices, and that's the fact that we also do so much internally, such as our own hiring and our own work in human resources, or in the area of procurement, for example. We have a lot we can do in terms of making sure that we're fair and equitable in some of those organizational practices. So we made, wanted to make sure that's one, as part of those determinants, we also included our, our organizational practices. But really, we ask and we try to see, okay, are we expanding access to the determinants, opportunities to these determinants, or are we actually creating barriers to these? And what can we do to actually enhance access to these? We have a number of tools, and these are all available on our website, and we have really actually modifications of these that are used for various processes. We have an Equity and Social Justice Equity Impact Review Tool. The full tool is about a dozen pages, but as now, for example, we're working on, all departments are working on their budgets, they have to do when they make major changes between, in their, in the budget. For example, you're moving a site from one area to another, and maybe you're doing it because you're saving 5% on rent. You also actually have to say, okay, how is that decision better affecting our community, and how is better serving our community? So our low-income communities, people of color, and limited English proficient populations better served by that decision? And so we have, we have the main tool, and we have modifications of that tool. We also have a written language translation policy, and it's really a language access policy, that also, we have some things around interpretation as well. And really, and now, if you, there's certain things that are, that we have defined as public communication materials. All of those have to be now translated at least into Spanish. And we also actually have created 20 language tiers, or 20 different languages that are in our tiers, that say, these are the ones you should consider based on where you're doing the outreach, where you're doing your work, just 'cause we know of the growing diversity in our community. And we've also created a community engagement guide to make sure that our programs are effective in how we engage our communities. So really, this is, I think, the last slide before we turn it over to Tina. And what do, what do we mean when we're talking about using an equity lens? And, and we do a lot of trainings, we do a lot of work around these things, but it's really, you know, the, these are three ways of doing it. One is thinking about these determinants of equity, and our increasing access to them or not increasing access to them. So that's one way of thinking about it. Then also, we think about it in terms of these three buckets: decision-making and policies, organizational practices, and community engagement. So in terms of the decisions and, and policies, we need to ask the questions like, who benefits and who doesn't? And what changes are needed in order to make sure that those that have the greatest needs are actually being benefited by, by this work? Also, in terms of organizational practices, it's a similar thing, we need to make, do an analysis. And then community engagement, we ask, who are we engaging, who are we not, and how can we become more inclusive? Those are things that the tools that we've developed help us do. Finally, we have focused on three specific population groups, or we call them the priority groups, in terms of our work: low-income communities, people of color, and limited English proficient populations. And this is really based on the data. What does the data tell us in terms of whether the greatest needs, where we're seeing the biggest gaps in outcomes? And we know that we need to really focus our efforts where those needs are greatest, and that's why we've chosen these, these communities. It doesn't mean that other groups, such as, you know, gender, whether we look at gender, LGBT issues, disabilities, don't matter. It's not equity for some, and then not equity for others. But we need to be focused in this work, and being very intentional in how we do it. So this is where we think we can make the greatest impact in the county.
For now?
For now.
Okay. So, you wanna come up?
Yep.
So part of what, as we were doing this work, is really self-reflection. And in the Department of Public Health, one of my colleagues at the time, she's retired now, we started asking the question, before we ask other people to do what this ordinance asks for, look at ourselves, and how are we presenting? And ask the question, what, how is our staff composed? And the answer usually, when we answered, when we asked it was, you know, if you look at the population of, of employees in public health, they mirror the population of the county, as far as proportions of different groups who work in the department. However, when you look at it in relationship to the hierarchy, like who's making, who is in the decision-making levels of our department, you wouldn't find certain groups. And so as a result, we, we sponsored this project, and Tina Abbott very graciously and competently took this on, and actually produced one of the first major products of equity and social justice in King County. And it's best for her to talk about the work that she did.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so we began the project in 2010, and as Ngaazi said, the goal of our project was to look at establishing practices for diversifying our workforce. We established three aims at the outset of the project. The first, to increase the diversity of our workforce throughout the entire organization. The second was to also look at increasing the effectiveness and efficiency of our hiring processes by developing and incorporating best practices. We wanted some standard processes across, across all of our hiring in the department. And then finally, to weave that into the fabric of the work of public health through a policy, so that the work doesn't end should one of us leave our positions. The measures that we looked at for the diversity of staff was to look at staff and hires by race and ethnicity, classification, and by salary range. When we were thinking about the effectiveness and efficiency of our hiring process, we decided we wanted to look at the diversity of our applicant pools. It turned out that in looking at the data around our hiring, that our applicant pools are actually really very diverse, and we didn't want to establish any practices that would in any way damage what we already had. And if we could improve it, that was great. The next measure that we wanted to look at was the percent of staff turnover in the first year of employment. A common measure for efficiency of hiring practices is actually time to hire. But what some of the literature suggested was that an emphasis on shortening the length of time it takes to hire or fill a vacancy could result in some practices that would result in not hiring the best person for the job the first time, so establishing some waste into the process, which we didn't want to do. So we wanted to make sure we were hiring the right person for the job the first time. And then finally, the development and implementation of a policy that would codify what, what the work was. We started by looking at the data. When we looked at the, the population of public health department in the aggregate compared to the King County population, the geographic region, King County population, we found actually, quite surprising to me, that we very much mirrored the population. This wasn't the story that had been told at public health for many years. The story at public health was that we were not nearly as diverse as the community, and that's not what we found when we looked. And so this was surprising. We decided what that meant was, we needed to look at the data in some different ways. We started out by looking at applicants and hires by race. We originally thought that we could look at the hires by classification, so by job title across the department, to see if there were some, some areas of the department where we were already exhibiting some model behaviors that we could then just adopt across the department. Looking at the data, that we actually proved to be too cumbersome, so we started looking at it at a higher level. So applicants and hires by race is where we started. Here, you can see that we had more applications from people, the two pluses, people who claim two or more races, more applications, and for two or more races, and for African-Americans than we're hiring. And for people who are white, we were actually hiring more than we were getting applications for. And this was interesting. It didn't really tell us enough of the story, though, to have an idea about how to start focusing our work. So we were working with an epidemiologist in the department, and she helped us look at the, this data in a different way, and that was by dividing it up by salary range. So Q1 is quintile one, that's the lowest paid salary range, Q3 is in the middle, and Q5 is the highest paid salary ranges. And what we see here is, we grouped the small populations together. If you'd looked at each of these populations on their own, the data actually wouldn't be very revealing. So this is hires and our applications by race for those groups that are small. And you can see that at the lowest paid salary ranges, we have the most hires in these groups. So this is Native American, Hawaiian Pacific Islanders, and people who claim two or more races. So lowest salary ranges, highest level of diversity. The same was true for African-American applicants and hires. In the lowest paid salary ranges, we had the highest number of hires and applications, and as you go up the salary range, it decreases. The opposite was true when we looked at white applicants and hires. So as you go up the salary range, the number of applications and the number of hires increases for people who are white. Additionally, when we were looking at the previous slides, you could see that the number of hires was lower typically than the number of applicants. So the percent of hires was lower than the percent of applications that we're receiving. When you looked at the data for the white applicants, the opposite is true. The percent of hires, particularly in the highest salary ranges, is higher than the percent of applications. So this, this revealed some trends to us, and that's really all we could call it, is trends. We don't have any hard science about why this might be happening, but it was information that we needed to help us focus on our efforts, to focus the next part of our work. So basically, at the micro level, our workforce was not as diverse as the communities we served, which was what people had felt, that the, the face of the health department is mostly white. The, that's not true across the entire department, but it's true for the highest paid positions. So we gathered a group of people from across the department, hiring supervisors, people who are interested in, in diversifying the workforce, people who have been doing this kind of work for many years. Public health has a long history of working on diversity and social justice issues. And this chart, this, this board was actually the result of a brainstorming session around root cause for why we might be seeing the kinds of trends we were seeing in hiring. And what the, the group concluded was that it was really an interrelated group of things that were probably resulting in what we were seeing. Implicit bias, so implicit bias is hidden bias, things that we don't know that we have biases about. Explicit bias, those biases that we're aware of in ourselves, and then, of course, the structures and policies of the organization, where institutionalized bias resides. So following that, we brainstormed several countermeasures. The, the structure for this project was really a process improvement structure. We used the techniques and tools from process improvement to guide how we move forward with the project. So the group came up with a really robust list of potential countermeasures. It, it was over 50, I think. After doing some testing, reality testing on them, and outcome discussions about what would be the most impactful, we reduced the number of measures to something less than 20. I haven't counted them recently. The first thing that we did was, we developed a countering bias in the hiring process training. And it was actually, it's the second bullet on this slide. It's a 60-minute in-person training that I was doing upon request. We didn't ever formally announce it, it just, word of mouth about the training became, really, word of mouth is how this training became known, and the interest in the training actually grew to such a point that I couldn't keep up with it with the rest of my work. I was giving the presentation at least once a week, and in the first year, presented it about 50 times. Shortly after it became unsustainable, it was suggested that we turn that presentation into a video that was just in time, training for interview panels, which is what we've done. I extracted from the 60-minute training just those points about the interview process, so those things that you can do in the interview process to counter any hidden biases that you, as an interview panelist, may have. And so now that training is required of every person who's involved with a hiring, every single time at public health. So it's possible that someone could see that multiple times in a year if they're on several hiring committees. Next was our leadership, all received an anti-bias microaggressions training, and then continued training in undoing institutionalized racism or other anti-bias training was encouraged. We also are working on the recruitment materials that we produce at public health. Hiring supervisors have a great deal of input into what is posted on job announcements, and so now we have staff in human resources, and many supervisors are trained to make sure that the qualifications on a job announcement match the actual duties. It is uncommon to, to find, and this is true across the county government, to find things that are listed as qualifications that were really the result of previous experiences with people in positions and things you wanted to make sure you had, but the actual duties of the job hadn't changed to match the qualifications. So we wanted to make sure those were aligned. We wanted to work on eliminating the requirement for licenses and degrees, except for where they were actually required for success in the position. So we have positions where you have to have a degree or a license in order to practice, but there are lots of other positions where that isn't necessary, and we wanted And we wanted to make sure we didn't have those unnecessarily. And then making sure we're using plain language on the job announcement. We didn't want jargon to be a barrier. We have several recommendations that are being made for, in the interview preparation process, making sure that the selection materials are completely developed before hiring supervisors see any application materials, which was important because in Public Health, applications could be sent to a hiring manager for screening purposes. And the application materials may not be done at the time of a screening. And so we wanted to make sure that was completed now. Developing interview panels that were diverse. The research indicates that interview panels that have racial diversity on them actually change the outcomes of the selection process. And making sure that Human Resources or somebody has reviewed all of the materials before they are being used, just so there's another set of eyes on them. We established some metrics to guide us as we move forward. So in addition to the ones that I've talked about already, looking at some outcome measures. So some disparate impact analysis. Are we having the kinds of outcomes that we're hoping to have? Looking at demographic data in the department where there's less diversity to guide our training, which proved not to actually be necessary because the training has been so popular. And then examining race and ethnicity data for the pipelines that we have to more career service positions, so short-term temps and special duty assignments. And then some tools to support the process. So again, we don't want the work to go away when the people who have worked on the project are no longer available to do that. So establishing some tools to help supervisors and managers continue the work. And that concludes my presentation.
I hope you have some questions, so we can have some dialogue. Why don't you come up?
Yeah, I found it very interesting. I guess, first question I have is, unless I missed it, I don't think you really covered about recruiting. I was curious, do you make an effort to recruit from, you know, certain areas or through certain colleges or things like that to increase the diversity?
We do. The project really very intentionally focused on the time period from developing the job announcement to the time that a job was offered, and excluded recruiting, and also excluded all promotional work, which is the next phase of what we're going to be looking at, is outreach, recruitment, and developing a pipeline.
Okay. I see. So that'd be the next phase. So those make a difference, but you're focusing on that, the hiring phase right now?
Right. We're just starting that.
When do you think you'd have some of that work done? Another year or something?
Well, I hope this year, yeah. I'm going to advise on the next phase of the project, and we've got somebody who's starting the project management for that, and we've just started the planning for it.
Yeah, good. There's a lot of information for Council processing it, but other questions for the Council?
Mr. Corman?
Yes.
I just had one when you were showing the number of applications versus the number of hired. And how do you get less applications and more hired? How does that?
It's actually percentages, so it's not numbers. Those were percentages. And so what it means is that up at the top of the salary ranges, is that the number, the percentage of people who were hired who were white exceeded the percentage of the applicant pool that they were. So if they were, if it was 75% of all hires are white, then, and there are only 58% of the applicant pool. So it's not hard numbers, it's relative.
Okay.
Proportionality.
Proportionality.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, yes, I have a few questions. And one of my questions is, how do you, what do you recommend for organizations that have not progressed? You've got a lot of work in, behind you in this. It started out as an initiative. It developed further into an ordinance. You're part of a national team through the Joint Center for Political and Economic Studies, place matters, initiative for organizations, municipalities, that may not have the lens or may have not established the lens that you have right now. What are some first steps in addressing? One of the things that I'm very aware of, and I know you are, is that our workforce is going to change dramatically. That between now and 2040, we're going to see a complete shift in our workforce. I know that even here, with the city of Renton, we're looking at about, I believe it's about a good 40% of our workforce that are 55 years and older. And it's likelihood of boomers retiring, which is going to create some opportunities. What could we learn? What could we, what would be some starting points for someone who's interested? And I'll also add that nationally, I know that the workforce is, I did some research earlier today, is about 36% people of color. Within our city, our workforce of color is just under 12%, whereas our population is about 51%, which to me indicates that there are some areas for opportunity. So what would be some areas, the low-hanging fruit areas and some things that we would want to think about or begin the process of learning more about?
That's a great question, Councilwoman Taylor. You know, there are different parts of the answer, so I think, I'm going to start where you, where you're ending in terms of really, I mean, we're seeing this work as being central and necessary in order to respond as a county to the changing demographics and the needs. So it's been well documented that, yes, we're more diverse. At the same time, we are also having some, these gaps, these inequities are quite serious. And we also looked at models nationally and internationally, saying, okay, actually, the places that are, have the smallest gaps are the ones that tend to be, have better outcomes for everybody. So there are real reasons to actually address this. And it's going to be, it's our big challenge in King County if, in fact, we have some of the healthiest people and some of the best communities in the county, but in the country and in the world, at the same time, we have some communities that are really being left behind. Not only until we get everybody in a situation that they're benefiting from those, you know, levels of opportunities will we be able to make change. So really, we're seeing this, and there's a lot of evidence around it, too, that it's a necessary motion, especially as we become more diverse, because the communities of color and the poor communities are the ones that are being left behind. So, I mean, I think the case is really very strong and quite compelling. For us, it's been a very, and then going to the early part of your question, too, and where to start. I mean, for us, it's been a very long journey, and I think it's taken some time for us to get to where we are right now. And we have, we started with a lot of work around diversity and doing some trainings and some education of ourselves, too, around some of these issues. And feeling, you know, comfortable and starting from seeing some things in terms of where we can do some things, sometimes more around the edges and things that make things a little bit better. At this point, and also what we had when we launched the initial initiative, and now we have in 2008, we have the ordinance, there was a desire to really go further and go to the root causes and go to what really, you know, we need to, with the stream that Engazi was showing, we can continue to do work on the right side of that stream, which is the way we've been doing work for many years, and continue to try to stop the bleeding. But once we have, especially if we have economic crisis, we have a number of different things that we're being faced with, and we have other things that we need to do things more efficiently, it's a calling to say, okay, how can we go really address the root problems? So we're seeing it as very, you know, very central that we're addressing those problems. And you might be aware of a number of different things that are very large initiatives and things that are being pushed by Dow Constantine and also Fred Jarrett, who's his deputy, which is around, one is around customer service, and the other one is lean. And the other thing is equity and social justice. We actually see those as, you know, as one. They're all very much related. It's about how can we serve our community better, make more efficient use of resources, and go to some of the root causes of things, and really improve how we're doing business. So it's also, it's an imperative, it's a business decision that we're doing right now.
Ms. Corman?
Yes, Ms. Brey?
Excuse me, I wonder if you could address how this is funded, this work?
So, let me say that, I'll give you just an example of how it's funded or not funded. When Matias was talking about us educating ourselves, one of the things we did as far as opportunities is, we actually had, this was, it started from the staff. We had people in Public Health who had had the experience of going to an undoing institutional racism training. And after they came back, they were trying to put what they had learned into practice and couldn't figure out a way to do it. So they came up with this novel idea, which was to challenge leadership to go through what they had gone through. And we did. So I remember coming back, I was in the same class with my boss, and we came back. And on my next one-on-one, I said, "So what are we going to do with all this stuff that we had learned?" And he looked at me and he said, "But we don't have any resources." And you know that, it just stops conversation. So it's not really a resource issue as much as it is a changing of how we use the resources that we currently have. So what we have tried to do with this work is not make it something else that you do. It is actually how you're doing what you're doing. Right now, all of us who are working on it are also within our programs and within our departments. It's just trying to change how we do what we do, not, it was intentional not to create an office of equity or, you know, an equity czar in the county. It's people who are working in their jobs, getting that, being trained and being educated on how to use a different lens to look at what you're currently doing. So for example, I am a receptionist, and I'm the person who answers the phones. How is it that I can answer the phones in such a way that somebody who doesn't speak English, the way I speak it, can be well-served when they call? And they don't get frustrated? Is it me being able to recognize that I need to bring somebody who has language capacity to answer? Or is it me being patient enough to try to understand what they're saying? So I'm still doing my job. It's just a different way of doing it to make sure that the person who I'm interacting with is getting the best possible service that they could get. So, yeah, there's not a separate budget. We wish we did. We're trying to get it, but in the beginning, this is how we have started it. And you work it up to a point where really, it becomes, as we are discovering, it's gotten so that enough people have bought in and come on board that we may need some dedicated resources to do certain things. But in the beginning, it really is about educating ourselves, having the conversations, and weaving it into what we're doing already.
Mr. President?
Well, I just had another type of question. It had to do with how you took some of your information about races, when I know that some of those things you can't ask in the hiring process.
How we took, how we figured out that data around race?
Yes.
Well, it's, we were not, we're not asking questions in the interview process about race. We were looking at our data, our demographics, you know, people.
In your existing?
In our existing staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's also asked on every application. And so Human Resources has access to the data. It's optional. It's not made available to supervisors at the time of hire, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President?
Thank you guys for coming up today and presenting this. It was very useful information. I have two questions. My first question is, you all have talked a lot about what Executive Constantine has done, well, as far as the equity and social justice. How active has the King County Council been? Then my second question is, you gave some wonderful examples of what's going on in the Department of Health. Are you getting, hearing those same successes in other departments all over the county? And how are you gathering that data and just aggregating it?
Thank you so much for asking those questions and give us a chance. First of all, I do want to give credit and acknowledgement that this work was started under Executive Sims. He launched the initiative in 2008, and we had a wonderful champion in him. And then we were really lucky that when he was succeeded by Executive Constantine, we found an even more enthusiastic champion. As it was under his administration, with the King County Strategic Plan, putting that principle of fair and justice in there enabled us to get to the point of having this ordinance. So he, the other question was, we've talked about Public Health, what's going on in other places? We have an inter-branch team that is kind of the overseers of this work across the counties, a countywide team. We have representatives from every department and every separately elected official, including the council. So everyone is represented. We come there to learn and share with each other what's going on. And what we do is, each year, every department and every separately elected makes commitments. Every year, we make commitments. This is what we're going to do this year in furtherance of equity and social justice in the county. And then at the end of the year, we report on it. It's required by the ordinance, and you'll see it in the annual report. And then what we do in that team is, we share what we do. So this hiring project was done in Public Health, but it's been adopted countywide now. So the, our central county, Human Resources has adopted what was produced in Public Health. There are other things that have been produced in other areas that also get shared across, and we use them. So that's the idea with the team, is we bring the best of what each other has and share it across.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, and I wanted to just digress a moment to go back to when you were talking about the stream. That's a fascinating example, illustration of how it works from the community to, if you could bring that back, that slide up, if it's convenient, just so that the people at home can see what I'm referring to. Where we could see that to the left, to the left, where you see the pro-equity policies and how they address structural and structural racism and privilege, and how it begins at a narrow point, but it becomes more forceful as it moves downstream and have the various desperate impacts or positive impacts. You all have been very focused on understanding the importance of not just, as you stated, creating a department, a czar, or an office with a door and a person, but to try and come up with a policy that's embedded in everything that you do, which doesn't require addition, new additional resources all by itself, that it could be, begin with just changing the way that you view what you're already doing, utilizing those resources. So I want to move over to the left portion of this diagram to talk about policies. And if you could just spend a moment talking about the process of getting the tremendous buy-in that you have, because what I just heard you say, and I'm aware of it, you've got a department head buy-in, you got, you know, council buy-in, you got, you got a, you got a strong core of critical mass that's wanting to do this work. Now, that doesn't mean that everybody's there and they're
Now that doesn't mean that everybody's there and that it's perfect. We know that. We know that it's still a process and you're working on it. But what were some key elements to shift the mindsets to begin to adopt a new lens to make that paradigm shift?
Well, I think, number one, there was interest. There were, it was a critical mass in some staff to have this happen. And then we had data. We had the data as, you know, you saw in those maps, at least from the Department of Public Health, we had the data to show that something is not right here. And why? In the literature right now in health, we have what is called, what are called the social determinants of health. It's the idea that what creates health is not healthcare access. Okay? So we have a lot of debate about healthcare access and how do we pay for it? Who has coverage and who doesn't have coverage? And that's all, it's true, we need to have healthcare coverage. But there's a recognition that what creates health is not coverage. By the time you need coverage, you almost have, you know, damage is already done. So there's recognition that if you have a good paying job, chances are you're going to be healthy. If you have a neighborhood that is conducive to you being happy, you have neighbors that you get along with, the chances of you being healthy are very high. If you have good transportation, all of those things that are not disease-related, if you will, are the things that make for a healthy, productive community. So it was knowing and having that information and then presenting it to our leadership, who really bought in, as I said. At the time, we were, we had this information, we knew it in Public Health. But when the opportunity came for us to be part of Place Matters, we took it to the executive at the time, Executive Sims. And he was very supportive and this is, you know, something he believed that needed to be done. And so that really gave us the push to start. And then we have been really lucky so far to have continued interest and buy-in and sponsorship from our leadership moving forward. As you know, the ordinance was unanimously passed by county council. And so we have support there. And all of the separately elected officials were on board and signed on. So it has, leadership support has been key. But to get there, we had the data to show that there is a need.
One final question. You touched on some of your tools, your language translation tool, the community engagement tool. I'm particularly fascinated with the Equity Impact Review Tool. Can you cite an example of how that was utilized in a way that produced some good outcomes? It benefited communities?
Sure, we have, we have a lot of it. I mean, it's used all the time. But one of the ones I'll mention, and this is one that didn't come from Public Health, it's health-related, we have an employee health program, which basically has people participate in their health by taking an assessment and then doing a program in which they qualify for gold, silver, or bronze. And it basically, if they are good participants, they fill out the quiz and then they fill out these, it's about a 10-week program, they will have to pay the lowest out-of-pocket and get gold. Then if they don't do so well, then it's a silver and then the lowest is the bronze. We did, using the Equity Impact Review Tool, and which is central is, it's just not one person alone, you know, in a room doing, thinking about the issue. It's creating a team, somebody who has the data, somebody who's an equity expert or a champion, somebody who knows the program and the policy. Basically looked at that data and saw that actually there was difference by job class and where people worked in terms of why you were, who was getting gold, who was getting silver, and who were getting bronze. It was those lower income, lower job classes, even janitorial staff, for example, who are the ones more likely to be getting the bronze. And then folks who had access to computers, who had more desk time, those kinds of things, because it's actually something you also could participate from your work site, were more likely to get gold. So in that situation, the data, just looking at it, said, wait, we have a program here that's made to benefit employees. All of a sudden, we are disproportionately affecting some of the folks that are already having the biggest challenges in terms of even earning the least amount of money. And then we're making it even more challenging for them to, you know, kind of qualify for gold. So, you know, the Equity Impact Review Tool can be done for both changing a policy and making it something different or a program, or mitigating and saying, okay, what can we do different? In this particular situation, we didn't change the program. We didn't, you know, get rid of the program. But what we did is make sure that we had some of the surveys and some of the tools, be able to go out to employees and hard copies. We made sure that some of them had workstations too at the work sites where they can actually use a computer to do some of these things. So it just helped us think about, you know, how we can have those people have a better chance of getting gold. It's really about just providing an opportunity for them as well.
I think I'm gonna, as a timekeeper, I'm gonna have to wrap this up. I want to thank you so much for coming down here. It's very interesting information, a great, a great sharing for this community. It's televised, so many people in the television audience are going to get a chance to see the good information you've shared. My colleagues had to take a quick break to reconvene at 7:00, so sorry to the other two council members.
Thank you very much for having us. And we look forward to partnership with you, really. We have materials that we can share and you're welcome to.
Okay, good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
With that, committee, the whole is adjourned and we'll reconvene in a couple of minutes, City Council. Thanks.